Okay. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 7, 2013, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 8, 2013, at 8:47 a.m., and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor, Borough Hall 221 South 5th Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on January 8, 2013, at 9 a.m. Fire exits are to my right and left, your left and right respectively. I would ask both people on the dais as well as members of the public to speak into the microphones, and for those who may have a need, assistive listening devices are available. Okay, let's see. So, Brian Taxman, would you please lead us in the pledge? Roll call?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman Malay?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak?
Here.
Okay. Council reports. I'm going to start with Councilmember Foster Dublin. Elsie, do you have anything you'd like to? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Before we do that, recently the Borough lost two treasures. One, former councilperson Rini Dwork, and who was not just a councilperson but a distinguished citizen and volunteer for many, many years, as well as Barry Quiss, whom among, not only received the Volunteer of the Year Award for his work with the Food Pantry, but spent years of dedicated service, among other things, with the Highland Park First Aid Squad. And what I'd like to do is ask for, I think we'll take two moments of silence, one for Rini and one for Barry. Councilmember Foster Dublin, did you have a report for the senior?
Just briefly. Just want to report that we, last week, we had a meeting after the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. The Public Safety Group met, and we had a discussion, a town forum, on gun. We first, we called it Gun Control, and then we, as we progressed, well, as soon as the meeting began, it was changed to Gun Safety. And there were a lot of questions about what we can do here in Highland Park to ensure safety of guns and that guns are secure, and to educate our public. And different ideas came about. We're going to be meeting another three weeks to have another forum and to discuss this further. But there are some takeaways that we had, that we received, that we can put in place right away, and we'll be working with the Prosecutor's Office, our Police Department, and the, and Juvenile Justice Commission to find out what are some of the things that we can be proactive in doing. Some of the takeaway were that Highland Park, we could do, from the health standpoint, we can do a background check on all applicants to make sure that if there's any mental illness, if that comes up, that's something that we can address. Our Police Department would also do fingerprinting. They would do a records check. There would have to be two letters of recommendation that comes in for, before anyone would receive any kind of gun or permit to get a gun. After all the checks and balances have been done, then a recommendation would be made to our police chief, and the police chief at that time would determine if the person would receive a gun permit. We're going to be working and looking at a lot more things to see what we can do in Highland Park to keep our residents safe, but not only our residents, what we can do to hopefully make a change in our greater society. We'll be meeting again in the next three weeks. We'll keep you posted. Please, we'll be sending out information on Nixlin on our website. And anyone who's interested at time, please come on out and lend your voice and see what we can do to help take some of these guns off the street. Thank you.
Councilman Potts?
Just wanted to announce that this coming Thursday, February 7, in this very room at 7:30, the Teen Advisory Committee will be holding a meeting. So if anyone, if any teens are interested in joining the group, I encourage you to come to that meeting this coming Thursday, February 7. There's lots of senior activities that are going on down at the Senior Youth Center, and I encourage anyone who's interested in those to check into the different, any special senior trips that are different activities they have going on. And I know with the snow and cold weather, no one's probably thinking about this yet, but the summer camp program information will be coming out relatively shortly, both for the Discovery Camp and also for the sports camps that are going to be offered this summer. So that's something to look forward to, and probably at the next council meeting, I'll be able to report more about that for the summer. Thank you.
Councilmember Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. First, thanks to everyone who participated in our annual Martin Luther King's Annual Celebration. That was on January 21. We haven't met for a while. It was our biggest event to date. Thanks to inspiring performances by the Band School Performing Arts of New Brunswick, founded by Normory Davis McLean, and our own Highland Park Community Chorus, to Rabbi Kamenetzky for his opening remarks. Special thanks to our amazing guest speaker, John Paxton Jr., adjunct professor at Rutgers, and to Ashton Burrell, recipient of the Martin Luther King Jr. Humanitarian Award, to Gary Leslie, videographer, and also thank you, Gary, for making the video available on HPTV, to Saskia Marina, our photographer, both volunteering their professional services, to Andrea Bay and Janet Molina in organizing the venue and announcing it, to Terry Banks, member of the Human Relations Commission, and her beautiful twin daughters, who are both ushers, to Sheila Highsmith, the Chair of the Commission, for producing another great event. And thanks to all my fellow council members who were there and came out, and everybody else who came out on that midwinter, on that cold midwinter evening. A couple of other pieces of news. From the Housing Authority, another thank you there, to Jacqueline Jurisick. She participated in the drawing of our Section 8 applications. Jacqueline is on the Board of the Reformed Church Housing Authority and wife of the church elder, and she helped preside over the, over the drawing. Also with Housing Authority, tonight, we're going to vote on appointing Morgan Chen, a Highland Park resident, a father, a Realtor, to the Board of Housing Authority. He's an active member of our community, and he would make a good addition to that, to then mix on that board. News from the library. Tonight, we're also going to vote on promoting our part-time teen librarian to a full-time position. The library is benefiting from new infrastructure and automation and the cost savings from that. We would like to apply internally back to the library to improve staff and programming and making her a full-time member. And just a couple other things. The library is also offering two very special music performances by local musicians, a folk concert with the Highlanders, a group of all Highland Park residents. They'll perform on Thursday, Feb. 28, at 7:00 p.m. at the library, and on March 3, at 2:00 p.m., Brusna, from the Highland Park, New Brunswick area, will perform Celtic music. And these are in addition to the other regular scheduled events that they, that the library has. Please, we encourage you to go to the library's website and look up to see what they have going on. And news from the Food Pantry. They're going to be sponsoring two food drives. The first one on Sunday, February 10, and the next one on Sunday, March 17, from 11 to 3:00 p.m. And that'll be at Stop &amp; Shop. We'll have a table there with information for people that, that need to sign up to use the services of the Food Pantry, but also for people that want to volunteer, and we'll be accepting food donations and also cash and check. So please stop by. Thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Okay. Councilman Erickson. I'm sorry. I apologize. Councilmember Beryl Mittler?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm still getting used to you being there.
I'm still trying to find my seat, too.
Okay. Were you able to kick me from here, from there, or just?
Patrick has taken lessons on proper kicking.
Excellent.
In all seriousness, our communications group has been sending out regular Nixel messages alerting our residents who've signed out, up for these messages about upcoming events and important information. If you have not yet signed up to receive these Nixel messages, please visit the Borough's website at hpborough.com, and sign up by giving your email address online there. We have our e-news is up and running again. It's, it was, there was a slight hiatus, and now every two weeks, you'll be getting the e-news from the Borough with other information and highlights about particular residents or events going on around town. And our own Gary Leslie, who is busy in the back filming all of this, or taping all of this, I should say, is holding a meeting. Gary, what is the date of the next meeting for your volunteers? Okay. On February 26. Anyone with ideas for new program origination, or ideas for volunteering, or who can lend some help to this committee would be greatly appreciated. Again, it's February 26, in the evening, I assume. 7:30. Thanks, Gary. Main Street Highland Park has been running, I believe it was yesterday, a contest to win the window. Residents were encouraged to visit the window decorated at Highland Sparks on Raritan Avenue off of Second, I think it is? Yeah, Second Avenue. And I, to enter a contest to win everything in the window, items were donated by local merchants. There were services and items available. And finally, in relationship to our streetscape, as you may have noticed, there are lights up and working in the evenings in our living room sitting areas on several of our corners in the downtown area. All of the lamps in the living rooms will be working in a couple of weeks, I believe. But right now, you can stroll along the avenue, even in this cold weather, and sit and chat in lighted areas on our living room corners. I know that I've noticed several people, even in this cold, sitting on the benches in the, on the corners in the evenings as I drive by, being warm. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Erickson?
Two things, briefly. One is that on tonight's agenda is the bond ordinance for covering the cost of the sidewalk improvement program. A number of months ago, it seems like now, that people were notified that their sidewalks needed to be replaced or repaired, and that people could sign up for a program if they wanted to that would be run through the Borough and paid through their property tax bill. Well, that's finally coming to the council. The other is that, I may have mentioned this at the last meeting, the audit for the Borough for last year has been completed and is available to review by the public clerk's office. That's all.
Thank you. Council President Malay?
Yes. Just a brief note on the construction across the street at the Public Safety Complex. For those of you that are unaware, I'll just give a brief synopsis of what is going on. We are essentially refurbishing the existing firehouse and building a new public safety building separate from the firehouse. And this was done with, we did go out and bond for this, but thankfully, due to this economic, the economic conditions, the cost of doing so was extremely beneficial to us, and the, the prices of the various contractors and architects were also very beneficial. So it, it may seem counterintuitive, but actually building this building now is saving the Borough a lot of money because it had to be done. We were well, you know, behind in our, in our code compliance, and this will give us a more efficient and, you know, safer building for both the police and the community. That's my report.
Thank you. Just briefly, I'd like to thank Councilmember Foster Dublin, with an assist from Councilmember Welkowitz, for conducting this focus group this past week, which I understand garnered some media attention. So thank you for all your efforts in working to keep all of us safe. I'd like to re-congratulate, even though I did this in, Council, Council President Malay did this in my stead, I'd like to congratulate Ashton Burrell for his receipt of, in recognition of the Martin Luther King Humanitarian Award by the Borough. And I would like to thank Susie for an amazing job in pulling together what I watched today, that Gary Leslie was gracious enough to put up on YouTube. It was really an extraordinary program, which just continues to build and grow each passing year. So that's become a signature event in Highland Park, and we're very grateful for everybody's hard work and commitment to that. Okay. So here's what I'd like to do with the public and with the governing bodies' indulgence, because I am told that we have, forgive me, we have an attorney here this evening who pulls by the hour. So the way I'd like to do this, and that's out of deference to an applicant that's here with something that's on our consent agenda, so what I'd like to do is defer the current public discussion, we'll have that with the other public discussion. This way, we can introduce the, have the conversation about the Salary Ordinance Amendment and the introduction of the bond ordinance that John Erickson just mentioned, and this way, we can move to the consent agenda, and then we'll have plenty of time for public discussion at the end. So, is everybody okay with that?
You skipped a minute.
No, that was my mayor's report, and so we're up to item, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor's prerogative. Do either the administrator or the attorney have any reports for this evening?
No report, Mayor.
Well, thank you. See how well that went? Okay. Clerk, can you report on advertising the Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park, and the method of payment of such compensation was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. Can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any public comment? We have a public hearing now. Is there any public comments specifically on this salary ordinance amendment? Okay. Seeing that there's none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title.
So moved. Second.
That's to adopt?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you report on an introduction of a bond ordinance providing for the 2013 Sidewalk Improvement Program for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the 2013 Sidewalk Improvement Program along various real properties in and by the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Mendocicke State in New Jersey, appropriating $600,000, and authorizing the issuance of $571,000 in bonds or notes of the Borough to finance part of the cost thereof, and this special assessment of the cost has been introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Moved to adopt. Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. We're up to our consent agenda. I'll read the items individually. It's items number 21351 through 21367 inclusive. Resolution authorizing amendment to annual salary resolution. Resolution authorizing final payout to Sergeant Joseph Spiezinger. Resolution to approve change orders for the public safety building. Resolution to approve payment H&amp;S Construction for the public safety building. Resolution to approve payment to excavation company Tom Busk &amp; Son Construction, LLC. Resolution to credit water and sewer account for 19-21 South Second Avenue. Resolution to approve a taxi operator. Resolution to approve bills list. Resolution to approve pay estimate number 12, Conquest Industries, LLC, Highland Park Streetscape Project. Resolution to approve purchase of lighted crosswalk and message board for Police Department. Resolution to amend professional services agreement, CME Associates Sidewalk Improvement Project. Resolution to approve installation of wiring for Police Dispatch Area. Resolution to approve person-to-person transfer of plenary retail distribution license by Art Corporation to Keyadan, Inc. Resolution to appoint Housing Authority member Morgan Chen. Professional Services Resolution, CME Associates, 2012 curb and sidewalk replacement program. Resolution to approve payment to public safety building architect. Resolution to approve 2013 spring tree planting project. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution to approve budget transfers. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt? Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. We're up to number 30. Okay. So Mayor Minkoff?
No.
Oh, so it is number 29.
Twenty-nine.
Yes. Resolution to approve emergency temporary appropriations. Can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Just to that point, there's no emergency that I'm aware of. Correct me if I'm wrong. Borough Administrator and Chief Financial Officer Kovak, we just called them Emergency Budget Transfers?
No, they closed.
Right. Okay. Because we haven't approved our budget for this year yet. Okay. Okay. So as Mayor, I'm going to appoint the following professionals for 2013. Special Counsel Jeffrey Serenian. Special Planner Phil Caton. Borough Engineer David Samuel. And I'm going to appoint, on a continuing 30-day additional term, a professional for Borough Planning, Alan Chectel. And I'm pleased to appoint H. James Polos to serve as a Deputy OEM Coordinator. Can I have a motion to confirm these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Does the appointment of James Polos to be our Deputy OEM Coordinator violate our dual office holding rules?
Borough Attorney?
Is this a volunteer position?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it would not.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So we were in the middle of a motion to confirm?
Uh huh.
Correct.
Did we get a motion?
You did.
You did.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're up to public discussion. I just want to make one comment if I could, so forgive me. Congratulations in order. I mean, I guess there's, there's a transaction that's actually taking place now, a longtime Highland Park institution, Pinos. I guess, Brian, are you officially riding off into the sunset? I mean, you know, Brian Taxman is not only the owner and operator of Pinos for many years, but he's a former chair of the Main Street Organization, has been very active in support of, of our efforts in the community, and we're grateful for all of that. The question is, are you going to be hanging around much longer? And forgive me, I don't remember your name, but I guess congratulations in order, in order to you. You have a tough act to follow, you know? And I hope that you'll be as great a service to the community as Brian has been for all these years. You don't have to say anything if you don't want to. Okay? This way we keep things moving along. That's good. All right. So with that...
Can I just say one thing, Gary?
Oh, sure. Now.
Just as, as a message to the community...
You got to come up to the microphone, Brian. See, now you're going to go through the process. You should have caught what you were ahead. Okay. So would you please, please give us your name and address?
For your Main Street one.
It's okay. Just give us your name and address for the record.
Brian Taxman. Pinos, 13 North Fourth Avenue, Highland Park.
Good luck, Mr. Stone.
It's been my pleasure to live in Pinos for the last 27 years, and to serve the community. Good for me, good for the town, good for the community, good for the Borough. The last message that I would like to leave to the citizens is this, that I think Main Street, Highland Park, has done a wonderful job of keeping the stores occupied and avoiding vacancies, and the message to the community is, support your local merchants. Shop local. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to be recognized? You have something else?
Sure.
The new owner?
We're anticipating...
Can you get with the program, please?
After this approval, we're anticipating an official closing on Tuesday, February 12.
Closing of the transaction, not the store?
Exactly.
Okay.
Out of the store.
Okay.
The store will remain open for its normal hours. So the effective date of the transfer of the license, we're requesting for Wednesday, February 13.
How do we do that?
It's already in the resolution for...
It's in the resolution for what?
As of today.
As of today. Does that mean we have to amend the resolution that we just adopted?
Sure. We can make it effective the 13th.
Do we need to amend that officially?
Yes, I would amend the resolution.
Okay. Can I have a motion then to...
Motion to amend the resolution for the date being Wednesday, February 13.
So moved.
Just one other point of my mind.
Second.
I don't want to...
No, go. I'm sorry. I'm joking, please. This is important stuff.
Robert Ray, the attorney for the applicant, Keyadan, Inc., Stephen Weinstein is the principal of that corporation, and he's looking forward to running the store, as Brian has for 27 years, maybe some younger. But my question is, we have the original license here, and my understanding is that the original has to be endorsed over to the applicant. So should I hand this in? Give it to the Borough? Okay. That was...
That's easy. Okay, man, that's fine.
It costs that much per hour.
Listen, they asked, I didn't, so it's okay with me. For once, well... You sure this is your last meeting? You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. So members of the public, are there public comment? Yes. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
He had a motion.
Oh, he had a motion for something?
Send him a second.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. Wait a minute. We have to finish this order of business. So did we get a second?
Yes.
You seconded? Okay, fine. All right, so can I have a roll call then on this amendment? Except we're out of control.
Councilwoman Pearl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
We lost her.
Councilman Malay?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay.
Amended.
Are we ready for public comment now? Yes, please come up and give us your name and address for the record. By the way, congratulations and good luck.
My name is Juan Ratlin, and I live in 210 South Sixth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. The reason why I'm here, I have wrote this letter here to Police Chief R. Risco.
Risco, sir.
Risco.
Thank you.
And I wanted to know if you had got a copy of this letter here.
Signed by you, sir?
Yes, it was signed by me.
I have not seen the letter from you.
Well, I have gave it to your Lieutenant Panacella. And when he had been, he had sent the police officer over there.
Over where?
Over across the street here. I had said that there had been some problems going on over there. The only time it goes on is in the summertime here, when the residents, when other people comes to the neighborhood, and some of them don't even live there. And then not only that, there's a lot of, some of them go over behind the little trail over here, he ain't getting, I mean, yearning back there. And that leads to stop. Because that's where the rodents are coming, that's where the rodents are coming from. And that the people live in the complex, they should be there, and if they leave trash and stuff all over the place, they should be fined. Or they leave garbage, some people leave garbage and stuff out there. And another thing, like, some of them don't live there, they sits in the parking lot late at night, glasses and music and stuff over there, and some of them don't even live there. I mean, I don't know why they do that.
I don't know either, but you certainly can call the police station when this happens, and anytime of day or night, and we'll respond and take care of it.
Okay. And, okay, that's one piece of message. Now, my other piece of message, over here at the Highland Park Rec Center here, now with the computers, I know that, noticed that we all go over there and uses the computers. Now, all of a sudden here, they had put a limit on, a limit on to an hour. Could you tell me why they did that? Well, I mean, the seniors, they don't even use the computers.
We'll have to...
Elsie's not here, I don't know, she went to...
Well, it's Gary's...
I'm not, I wasn't aware that there was a time limit placed, so that...
They had put a time limit on the computers for an hour over there, that's the rec center. I can see that being for a library. That they shouldn't put no time limit on the computer over there.
Did you inquire at the rec center about that?
I was gonna say, did you check with the rec center on any possible?
I didn't say anything about it, but I did say that I was going to bring it up at the next council meeting.
The chief has something to say about this?
I just spoke to Andrea Day about that, and we don't, we wanted to do what the library, similar to what the library did, to keep anyone from monopolizing the computers, so everyone had a fair chance to use it. We think an hour at a time is fair, and that's why I have to say.
Okay. And another thing, like, some of the employees over there, I know some of them are in the master booth sometime, like, I know some people, some of them there had made racial slurs over there. I'm not gonna mention their names. And all the head lady, it was talked to him over there. He never was made to apologize for his remarks. And I think that it should be appropriate that he needs to apologize.
I agree.
And he should, I mean, not only him, they should make no kind, no statement, everybody should be treated...
So let me say this about that, if I could, without knowing the specifics of the circumstance, there's no question that the only acceptable way for Borough employees to behave, and that I hope in general the residents will behave in Highland Park, is with decorum and dignity and respect when they address each other. What I would propose, so if that didn't happen, then the first thing, obviously, we would have to do is look into that. But since I'm not familiar with those circumstances, and I'm not sure who is, we'd have to do some follow-up with the appropriate council person, the administrator, to learn if there's, you know, to find out what specifically may or may not have happened in that circumstance. So, I'm not questioning the veracity of what you've said. At the same time, since we're not going to get into the names here, obviously, and I don't know the circumstances, it's not something that we can properly address here and now. So, but we certainly can follow up, where I would advise you to follow up with the administrator and with Councilman Potts, and then we can look into this.
Well, I have, I have done that with the administrator, administrator on another one of the, the rec employees, and she was very rude towards me on the telephone. And I told the administrator, if that happens again, we were going to go to court. And her response said, "Well, how can you prove it?" And I had told her I had a witness. And she asked me who it was, and I refused to help.
Well, all I can...
Do you remember that conversation, Mr. Kovak?
No.
Well, I...
I remember having a conversation with you, but it would be...
Please speak into the microphone, sorry.
I'm sorry, Gary.
It's okay.
I remember having a conversation with you, but I don't remember it becoming confrontational.
Okay, so two things. One, if this is a matter for the court, and I don't know if it is or it isn't, but if it is a matter for the court, with all due respect to you, then it's gotta be something that's addressed through the court. If it's not a matter for the court, then we're gonna have to address it through the council person, the administrator.
I understand that, but when I called, I felt that I should have been treated better.
I absolutely can appreciate that, and for sure, that's what we seek. All I'm saying now is that if you're going to say that this is a potential judicial matter, it's not something that we'll be able to address with this body right now. Okay? But I do appreciate you calling it to our attention. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Bickhart? Yeah, please?
Let's get that through a separate note. Tell me what OEM, Deputy OEM Coordinator does.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Councilmember Foster Dublin chairs our Public Safety Committee, so she can explain that.
Office of Emergency Management. Oh, okay.
That was an easy one. I would have explained that then, so, okay.
Garbage. I wish since, on the one hand, I think it's great that we solidate, especially in the wintertime, the one day the recycling, one day the garbage. However, people put their containers out Wednesday morning, Wednesday afternoon, for searches, recycling on the south side. The cans are overloaded, and then comes Sandy, or Irene, or whatever it is, and it spilt, it's all over the street. Half the, half of the cans are spilled. I mean, I find it frustrating. There are two family houses in my block, they're not owned, mine is the only owner-occupied one, the tenants don't care. Is there a solution to that? I don't know if you have...
Well, I don't know if there's a solution, but I think that Council President Malay, who oversees Public Works, may have some thoughts.
One is that, I don't know if there's an, but it's perfectly legitimate for somebody to put their recycling out, you know, the afternoon or the evening of the day before it's collected, because it's too much of a hardship to get your recycling together before seven, let's say, on the morning it's collected. What we can do, if we have strong winds with a can full of plastic bottles, it's going to be difficult to keep them, you know, from spilling, but we can look into different ways, you know, and maybe pass on suggestions. A lot of times, what I do is, I'll put something heavy on my paper bin, so, you know, it doesn't blow away, but, you know, perhaps we can, but I don't know, as far as Borough ordinance and/or procedures, how we could change, but we're having a meeting with our Public Work Committee very shortly, so we'll bring it up, because I know that my cans went all over in the last big windstorm, and they often do, you know, after they've been collected, and you gotta go find them. Oh, yeah. Well, being a good neighbor is hard to, you know, decree by ordinance, unfortunately.
Look into it. Larger receptacles might be a solution. And some people have put their recyclables into large garbage bags, and knotted them in anticipation of the storm, and they were left behind.
Yeah, that's the policy, sorry. They don't, they don't, right, the instruction is that they not be placed in bags.
Yet you can put the plastic bag into the recycling, so it's a little...
You know, we'll, we'll...
You might consider that when you read it.
As we move forward, you know, this has only been, I think, six months, six to eight months since our switch, so, you know, we'll keep trying to improve things as we go along.
Can I add to that?
Please.
Mrs. Bickhart, during the last storm, we had sent out, prior to Hurricane Sandy, we had sent out alerts telling people that we would not be collecting recyclables and for them not to go out, so information was sent out for that. And we do have an ordinance that does state that you're not supposed to put out 24 hours before, before the garbage is going to be collected. So that's on record, but away from that, there's nothing else that we can do. At this time, away from just advise people about what the ordinance says, and to do an inclement weather, to let people know that there is a pending storm or what have you, so please do not put out your garbage or recyclables. So there is something that we were trying to be very proactive against in the last storm, to let people know not to put out their recyclables, because, for obvious reasons, they're gonna be blown away. Are you on the Nixle?
Yeah. I don't keep forgetting that, because usually, my home, the engine machine, it's...
Well, you're talking about two different things. Elsie's talking about Global Connect, which is the phone, Elsie's talking about Nixle, which is a text messaging system? I'm sorry?
I'm all in favor of that.
Right, but here's the thing, she's talking about the Nixle text messaging system, you're talking about Global Connect, which is our phone system. We used both.
Oh, no, the other one on the phone, okay, that's the one I have to sign up for.
Yes.
Right, and so this is a great way of, everyone, please sign up for the, on our communication system, so we can much more effectively communicate with you and let you know what's happening.
By the way, just as a public service announcement, we do not charge for any of these messaging systems. If your cellular carrier charges you for incoming text messages, or you have a quota on text messages, that charge is between you and your carrier, so just, if you have a limit, just be cognizant of that. But we don't, there's no charge on our end for that Nixle service. Okay. Any other public comment or public discussion? All right, seeing that there's none, can I have a motion to adjourn to our conference session?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, goodnight.